Whenever you are.
We're good to go.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, then I'm going to officially call this special meeting to order at 6:30, sorry, 6:32. And I'm calling the special meeting to order for the Emeryville Planning Commission, and the date is the 17th, June 17th, at 6:32. So I will read the COVID script. I'd like to state to the record that this special meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to the main city of Emeryville website at www.emeriville.org, and then navigating to the Planning Commission page. Once there, you will see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, and there's a link on the Planning Commission agenda as well. So Charlie, I'd like to move to the roll call.
Right. Commissioner Chafe.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Mendez.
Here.
Commissioner Simons.
Present.
Commissioner Zepko is expected shortly. Vice Chair Young.
Here.
And Chair Thompson.
Here.
We have six commissioners present. I'm going to mute myself, so you don't have to listen to that.
Thanks, Charlie. So here's the public comment. Period now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda, again, this is a study session for objective standards, so it's a special meeting, but if you have anything that's not on the agenda, you should have begun submitting your online speaker cards by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please raise your hand. Use the Raise Your Hand feature, visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9, and the clerk will call on you at the appropriate time. At this time, I'll ask Charlie, I think, whether any comments have been received by an online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand.
I do not have any online comment cards, and I do not see any raised hands among the attendees.
Okay. Well, I think then we will move on. Hearing no additional requests to make public comments, the public comment period of this meeting is closed. You will have an opportunity to address and speak on the matters that are listed on the agenda when those respective items come up. So the next item on the agenda is the disclosure of ex parte communications and the identification of conflicts of interest. Does anyone have anything? Okay, seeing none, I think we will move right into our study session. So the study session is on objective standards, and I know this is Navarro Oakes's agenda item, but I think that this will go straight to the consultants to do a presentation.
Yes, I am promoting them to panelists right now, so you'll be seeing them shortly. And there they are. And turn it over to Jean Iceberg. Are you here? To make the, I believe Jean Iceberg and Jane Lynn will be making the staff, well, the presentation.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Hi, I'm Jean Iceberg with Lexington Planning. I'm joined by Jane Lynn from Urban Fields Studio, and Jean's going to go ahead and share her screen. So this is a continued item from our meeting in April. We're talking about objective design standards. And our agenda tonight is first to recraft what the project is, next to talk about the feedback we've received so far, first from the study session that we had with you in April, and feedback from the city council. We did provide them with a more targeted presentation, and so they limited their comments to that night and didn't see the need to have an additional study session. And so we're trying to provide the same focus for you tonight. We threw a lot at you last time, so I'm looking forward to our focused discussion tonight. Jane's going to run through some design topics and provide some example projects to help get some color to our discussions. And then lastly, we'll have a discussion which we're going to recommend in about three parts. So first, we'll talk, have a round of going through your general responses to what you presented, of general ideas about design, and then we'll try to segment to talk about issues related to the site and the public realm, and the relationship between the building and the site, it should be the building and the public realm, and then have a discussion about building design. So in terms of the project, the next slide, one more. The objective standards project again was funded by SNFL2. This funding to provide local governments with funding and technical assistance to streamline housing approvals, facilitate housing affordability, and accelerate housing production. We'll primarily focus this on the streamlining aspect, and that is to transform certain subjective criteria, priority design guidelines, into objective standards so that they continue to be applied to certain types of projects undergoing streamlining, and the city can continue to ensure a high level of high-quality housing and the related public improvements. As part of that, we'll also be looking to clarify existing standards and guidelines to make sure that all of their requirements are clear prior to applicants committing applications as required by state law. And so all of this will help the city to further comply with recent past legislation. The next slide summarizes our key issues that we talked a lot about last time, but basically, there's been recent changes in state law that allow certain types of projects to undergo streamlined review. And so, right the way it is now, most of the city's objective standards relate to development standards. There are some objective design standards, but most of the design regulations are subjective, which means that they cannot be applied for certain types of multifamily and mixed-use projects. And so in that way, the making of subjective findings related to the design guidelines becomes unnecessary and burdensome. And so what these state laws together do is they can limit the city's ability to deny a project, to reduce the density, or to modify. So as a result, as I mentioned, the city's considering developing standards that aim to retain the intent behind the design guidelines and the design visions established in subjective regulations, but really that are objective. And so on the right, these are some of the existing processes and regulations. Since we talked to you last, we further narrow that if we're really going to be focusing on the planning regulations and design guidelines, the project's not going to focus on the district level plans. So the next slide, this project slide looks familiar to you. This is a recently approved SB 35 project. This was a ministerial approval, so this approval was done by staff based on objective standards, particularly development standards. But this was reviewed at a community meeting, so provided the community opportunity to review the project, and also in a study session with the planning commission. So although the commission and council's review was limited to objective standards, certainly there was a conversation that happened at the study session between the commission providing advisory design comments to the applicant. And Jane will present this slide a little bit later to generate some of your thinking. And then the next slide talks about another project that just appeared at the study session, which the applicant is considering as an SB 35 approval. So likewise, this project would only be subject to objective standards if it came in under SB 35. So just to summarize the feedback that we heard last time, the commission expressed new concerns about the sort of philosophy of this project or objective standards being too prescriptive, but there was a desire to allow creativity, innovation, and design variety in Emeryville. There was an interest in pursuing incentives versus specific mandates about what regulations might be required. There was a lot of discussion about sustainability, energy efficiency, a desire for developments to be accessible to bikes and pedestrians, and particularly to leverage the existing work that's already been done in the city around these efforts, including the Climate Action Plan, the Active Transportation Plan, and Complete Streets. Drilling down into some more details, commissioners discussed considering impact to neighbors in terms of views and shadows and access to light and air, as well as additional building design details, particularly around windows, glare from materials or lighting, bird safety and bird safe glass, and public art. And then we also heard a point about just wanting to consider what makes a great housing project, rather than trying to consolidate measures or regulations from existing plans. And you'll see this theme in our main questions later in the presentation, and that will inform our discussion. And then lastly, it is that you have a desire for more discussion, which is why we are back tonight. The next slide summarizes the feedback that we got from the city council. We've summarized that into two categories. First, site design. So there was a lot of discussions about the public realm, about site and pet access, desire for landscaping, open space that's visible from the sidewalk, from the public realm. In terms of bikes, some real specifics, talking about bike facilities, storage, charging for electric bikes, ramps, stairs, and generally parking and bicycle access. Also discussions about package delivery, which is a relatively new phenomenon, but in terms of deliveries and anticipating automated vehicles. And then lastly, just this desire for this project to support housing affordability. In terms of building design, a desire for sustainability related to environmental impact of buildings, all-electric, solar, as well as the bird-friendly design, and a desire to modernize codes and reflect the way people use space right now, and that relates to the packaging and deliveries again, but also some livability issues related to the location of the traction, just making sure there weren't odors. And then lastly, at least one comment from a council member that there was, I'm not interested in regulating form, massing, and articulation, the things that we think about when we think about building design. So the next slide, I talked a little bit about, you know, many of these existing standards are already in the code, including the public art ordinance, specific standards for street furniture, excuse me, street skate clams, and certainly the design guidelines talk about a number of public realm efforts. Likewise, the city's code already has regulations to bird safety and certain features of sustainability. And so part of this effort needs to make it clear where those objective standards live, so that applicants, decision-makers, and for staff are all aware. Talking with staff, you know, we have revealed some places where we do want to see new objective standards, particularly around street trees and types of street trees. The Bike and Pet Advisory Committee is already looking at bike parking. And then lastly, I mentioned already that curb management and loading issues related to footages, Uber, and other deliveries. So key takeaways, just this desire for architectural variety, that we don't want to see everything with the fame that it involves with this project. And then we're not trying to design the perfect building, but rather create more of a framework around the type of design that's appropriate. There's definitely a strong interest in the relationship with the public realm, that we're not just talking about the building design, but how it relates to the street and how community members interact with the site and residents interact with the site. And then lastly, to support housing production and affordability, and in that way, not make the regulations to owners. On the right-hand side, we talked about this a little bit last time, but there are several ways we can create objective standards or modify existing subjective regulations to become more objective. And sometimes that's through adding a dimension, or if you want to be more flexible, a range of dimensions. Sometimes just adding more clarity, or sometimes it makes more effort to clarify, and it may be more appropriate as a menu of options in a similar way that you've structured the local density bonus ordinance in Emeryville. And then lastly, we certainly don't want to get rid of the expression of design guidelines, which really spell out the design intent. In the absence of that design intent, a standard can't fit on its own. There has to be an understanding for architects and for decision-makers to understand why that standard is there. So this leads up to our key questions before Jane continues with the presentation, but our first key question is just going to focus on a general question of what aspects of design are important to you, and would you want addressed in the objective standards?
Yes, Jeanie. Yes, great. So this portion will be a little more graphic, and hopefully it'll help you warm up your thinking about what aspects of design are really important. And this first slide is really about sort of the framework and our approach to this, and it's very much easily boiled down to outside, in, and bottom up. So, you know, in one way, we're looking at the site and the outside of the building and the public realm, and like the appearance of the building to the public, and then we're really concerned about all these different aspects of the building as far as how it functions on the inside and influences the public realm as well at the ground floor and within the building, the unit design and the building design, how it functions. Again, this is a little bit of a repeat of what Jeanie had just talked about. The design guidelines really help us establish intent, so I don't feel like you have to tell us objective design standards. We will help to work on those that are necessary, but we love to know your, we love to have you identify what's really desirable in multifamily design and then, and mixed-use design. And the next thing is to really boil it down into what defines the threshold. So whatever you'd like to speak to in those two ways. But again, outside, in, and bottom up is really the way we're going to go at this. And so here's some images just to help us warm up as well. For site design, thinking about the outside, and when we talk about the outside, we talk about the public realm, the sidewalks, of course, and our approach and our entry to the site, about street frontage, all of the amenities that might happen right there that everyone gets to experience as they approach the building. And that could include street trees, bicycle facilities, the access if there's transit available, and also for parking and utility screening and all the open space that accompanies the publicly accessible parts of the site. And then thinking more about the design of the building on the outside, it's the building form first, thinking about the total shape and volume, then thinking about the articulation of the facade, and really the skin of the facade, and how that has different variations to it, the expression of the architecture, and of course, building materials as well. So really still kind of at the surface, but really important. So this is just to give us also some examples of other SB 35 projects. And so these are the projects where objective design standards apply. And since these are very much affordable projects, they have a really efficient construction typically, and they are quite often regular modules, but some of them here have some elements of a little bit more variation to them. They tend to be a box, and so that's one of the things that we want to see if, you know, when we're talking about SB 35 projects and the objective design standards that define that base of what is acceptable, you know, this is really what we're looking after is, do we want it to be more than just a box? And also, you know, this is one of the comments we received, and we think this is a really good one. How do we accommodate for more creativity? So on one hand, we have this example of the enclave which really goes outside of the box and it's thinking, and then there, maybe you recall, there is, there was a very well circulated article about why America's new apartment buildings look all the same, and they have to do with, you know, very regulated dimensional standards that are all out there. And actually, objective design standards can fall into this trap as well. So how do we make our rules for building design so that they allow for something different that, you know, this, it depends on whether or not you like this or not, but you know, whether you can allow something that creates place-making and memorability and identity, or you know, this is, this is really on the right, something that is, what is acceptable, and so therefore, it has rules spelled out for it, and you know, this becomes the result. So this one is a very much debatable thing, and we'll have to look into that. As you know, your role as planning commissioners has always been to guide what we care about in design. And so this is just an example of Park on Powell as a project, and I don't know if you had known, but the original concepts that came to Planning Commission were the ones that are sketched out on the right. And so it was really the result of discussion, and this is where we have to think about what we really care about. So it's a result of discussion, and it had to do with how the project opens up to the public. I think it's had something to do with how, you know, comments really helped this design improve, because there were comments about building form variation, especially along the facades to make the building a little bit more interesting. And of course, also, part of that is the volume of the building and the shape of the building so that it has a lot more visual interest. So as you're contemplating what aspects of design are really important to you, are these kinds of things still important to you? And I'm going to suspect they are, so as you think about how to respond there, that's really great. So, okay, so we're back to thinking about the sidewalk treatment. As Jeanie had mentioned, there are quite a few existing design guidelines that are really helpful in our understanding and definition of what a good sidewalk treatment is. And I think one of the strongest things about it is the definition of the public amenity zone, and of course, also that there is, there are really great guidelines in place also for thinking about the landscaping and street trees, and perhaps there could be even more. And of course, you know, wherever there can be to address public art as well. So even if they are addressed already, it's really great to hear your suggestions about what it is that makes the sidewalk really special as a public place. And of course, you know, we're really thinking about more than just that sidewalk area. It's really about the entrances and the frontage along the sidewalk. And, you know, what I really like here in the Emeryville Design Guidelines is that there's, there's quite a bit of great definition of what's desirable and undesirable. Now, how do we push that a little bit further? Part of this, too, is not just pedestrian entrances, but trying to think about garage entrances, vehicle entrances, loading, and all of that, and thinking about how best to minimize it. And actually, we had a lot of fun touring Emeryville and looking, I think one of the best examples of a minimal garage entrance is at the Icon on Doyle. And it is extremely minimal. It's just one car width, and you can go in and out. And that kind of treatment where you're really minimizing the particular access point, but still allowing access and making it really more human scale, that is really quite amazing. So there, we also looked at, and this is just provided for your thinking as well, we looked at a newer project that is all prefab, the Logan and Temescal. And this one, too, there were efforts that were made to make the parking garage, of course, locate on the back, and also minimized from the frontage. It has a grocery store in it. So there's, you know, there's a lot of different things we can do to address the vehicle entrances, to make them as nicely designed as possible. And then here for shared entrances, these are where everybody comes that might be involved in the, you know, guests and residents and cyclists and loading. All of that happens at shared entrances. Sometimes it's this ascent to the podium on top. Sometimes it's celebrated with some things at the street, like public art. And so there's all these wonderful, different kinds of shared entrances. What really matters to you is something we'd love to hear. And of course, this is probably one of the bigger discussions. There are many edges of these multifamily projects where there are many multiple entrances, where they're individual unit entrances off of the ground floor. And while we know that this is a really important thing to help with activation of the street, but really, there are lots of different design aspects to this that make it amenable, really nice, a place where people really find a transition possible. So these are examples within Emeryville. Perhaps you're familiar with them. And then here's, here's just a few other images of other treatments where maybe there's some separation between the sidewalk and in height with a few steps up to a porch, or there might be landscaping. And then, of course, just to be aware that there are obviously ways where it isn't quite as successful. And so the critique of some of these is just, is also really helpful just to help us provide some direction on what you find is important. And as we go up, so this is from bottom to up, where we were talking about the ground floor experience before, and now we're really talking about the building facade, thinking about what kind of depth you would like to see in the facade, whether or not the window treatments, if there's something to define there as well, you know, whether the depth of the window treatment, or a framing, or any kind of, any kind of treatment that is important to you in terms of making the facade more fit into or be more context-appropriate to Emeryville, that those are all really helpful to us to know for your design preferences. So this is what Jeanie had shown before, the SB 35 project at 3600 San Pablo. We'd love for you to kind of tell us if you had, if you thought there were any objective design standards that you wish the city had when this came through. And also to think about, this is something, this is 3637 Adeline that came through with a pre-application. And when this comes back, what kind of objective design standards do you wish to apply to this project? This is very much like just an idea, and so obviously, it doesn't look like this, but trying to think, you know, when it comes in, what kinds, what kinds of objective design standards would you like to have in place? So this is where we pause for discussion, and I might hand this back to Jeanie. I'm going to take some notes on a whiteboard, and we will share those after a little bit. But we'd like to talk through some of your thoughts, your general thoughts about design as we begin. Jeanie, would you like to take over?
So well, before we do this, excuse me, we need for the chair to ask for clarifying questions from the commissioners, and then we need to take public comment. And as soon when that's done, then we will turn it over to Jeanie to facilitate the discussion.
Great. Okay. Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. And yeah, and so normally we do have clarifying questions. We're going to have a discussion to follow, so is there any burning question at this time? Okay, fantastic. Then we will do.
Chair Thompson, I do see Commissioner Keller's hand.
Oh, okay, sorry, yep.
Well, no, it could be, I just thought this is relevant now, but isn't a clarifying question. I just wanted to get some information on what our RINA numbers are currently. So should we save that for the discussion?
Well, I can tell you that it's currently about 1,500.
So what is our, well, my question is, what is, what percent of our RINA requirement have we met so far in terms of percentage?
Oh, Valerie Bernardo would know that better. I think it's around 50% or so overall, maybe 60%.
Okay. Then we'll just go objective to 60%. That answered my question. And then the rest, I'll wait till we get into discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. So I'm going to do the public comment now. Now is the time for public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submitting your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed to the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9, and the clerk will call on you at the appropriate time. At this time, Charlie, have you seen any comments been received by online comment card, or has anyone raised their hand to make audio comments? Oh, you're on mute, Charlie.
Sorry. I do not have any online speaker card, and I do not see any raised hands among the attendees.
Okay. Hearing no additional requests to make comments, the public comment portion of this item is now closed. And now I'd like to bring it back for facilitation by the consultants of a commission discussion.
Okay, thank you, Chair Thompson. So as I mentioned, what we'd like to do is have a first round of comments reacting to this question about what design is important to you, and what would you like to be addressed in the objective standards. And that's an opportunity to provide whatever you want to talk about for about, you know, two to three minutes per person. And then we'll try to do two more rounds of discussion related to what Jane explained going from the outside in. So first, talking about the site design and the public realm in front of the building, and then another round on the building design. So we'd like to start with generally aspects of design. Feel free to raise your hand or use the Zoom feature, but that's a long go from here.
Chair Thompson asked a clarifying question for discussion.
Chair Thompson asked a clarifying question for discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, in order to get a context of this, the one thing I had as a splinter in my brain is, I'd like to know how changing the subjective items to objective items streamlines the process? Because what I'm seeing is we're adding complexity and we're adding requirements to these standards, which to me is kind of in opposition to what the state's objective was in creating both of these bills. So if we add more things as an objective item, which means we have more control over it, how does that streamline and make the process faster for development?
Maybe I can take a cut at that.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I have a sense of it, but, go ahead.
It's not, I don't think the objective standards are really going to affect the process per se. The process is kind of what it is. The streamlining is by making the approval ministerial as opposed to discretionary. And that streamlines the process in various ways. For one thing, no planning commission or city council public hearings are required. Also importantly, no SEQA is required, because ministerial approvals are not subject to SEQA. And so if you, I'm just gonna give a random example here that I just made up. If you tell developers that all their windows have to be recessed by three inches, for example, that's fairly detailed. It doesn't take them a lot of time to figure out how to factor that into their design. We can give them a whole menu of things that are like that, that they just have to incorporate into their design, which I don't think would be terribly onerous for them to do. But then, when they do all those things, and we check it and make sure they've done all those things, then we just approve it. There's no SEQA, there's no public hearings, that's what streamlines the process.
Hey, but Charlie, isn't it now that way? Is the project that has been approved, did it go through SEQA project?
No, did not go through SEQA.
And did they have to come to us, or did they come to us out of courtesy?
They came to you because our, a funding agreement with them required.
Right, because we were partially funded. But generally, so the things that you're saying would change because we changed things subjective, won't actually change. They're currently that way now.
Well, not exact, I mean, many of our design guidelines, for example, are fairly subjective. You know, like, I don't know, articulate facade or something like that. That's kind of a judgment call on the part of the commission and staff, was this facade sufficiently articulated? And that is definitely a subjective kind of a thing that would not be allowed under this streamlined processing.
But would not be allowed for us to make comment, that would allow the developer to do as they like?
Right. It's a kind of a standard that wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowed under objective standards. But you could specify, I'm, there's probably, I don't know if there's a desire to do this, but you could specify measurable things about some articulation, that, you know, when you go this far up, you have to go back so many inches, or, you know, something like that, or whatever it may be. You can specify measurable things that any, any person can know in advance, and then that would be an objective standard.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have for now, in that remark.
Okay. So I think, Jeanie, you were interested in calling on people and having people kind of give a summary remark. Is there any individual you want to start with?
No, whoever would like to volunteer. We'll try to get to everybody each round.
Okay, I'm gonna call on some people. Henry, would you like to start?
Sure, I can start. I'm so happy we're doing this at 6:30, and now it's 10:30. I was really not stoked about the time, and now it's great, so glad we're doing this. So I think, just first of all, I've been looking at buildings as I'm grasping around Emeryville. And I think overall, the best buildings have a lot of articulation, a lot of good massing where it's that fast in the street. So it seems like, although I'm sure you could have a building that has no articulation and terrible massing, and it's looking great, it seems like if we're gonna get good-looking buildings, our best odds of doing that are to have strict guidelines around articulation and massing. I like the, I think the private entrances on the street are a really good idea when they work. But I think sometimes the streets are just too busy, where you can never actually see people using the space. So if there's some way we could say, if a street has X fewer cars per day, or is it a slow street or whatever, you know, require private entrances from the street, I'd be very interested in that. But I was, I was just thinking about that row of townhomes you showed on Powell Street, I guess just east of the bridge. And I drive by that all the time, or bike by that all the time, and I've never seen anybody, any of those doors open, doors open, plants are down. I think it's just kind of a waste, although I get sent to people to have those doors. You know, I personally love that very unique-looking building in Emeryville, or in Berkeley on Telegraph. I also just love that they went for something different. I don't know if we could do this, but if we could have a rule that said, if your building doesn't look like anything else in Emeryville, like, go for it. So because if somebody wants to propose something really unusual, that sounds great. I'd like to have a way to reward that. Yeah, and I think just generally, you know, I think the pro-articulation, making the buildings less flat is appealing to me. So I don't particularly care what window treatment, but things like that, I think we should require there to be window treatments.
Yep, thanks much.
Thanks, Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Mendez?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Yeah, my brain is definitely comprehending more earlier in the day. So I guess if we're gonna start in the public, I always feel like a successful neighborhood, well, a successful building will activate a neighborhood and allows for the public to interact with the building, whether it's maybe having moments where somebody is walking down the street, and, you know, they, they get a phone call, and they can just kind of like sit, take their phone call, and then continue on. So maybe having some kind of, something that says, if, you know, if your building is this many feet long, articulating it with some kind of urban furniture, or a moment where somebody can have like a random connection with, with another person walking by. I always feel like things like that really help activate the neighborhood and are very pleasant to, to walk by. Also articulating the building, obviously, I'm very pro that. It just kind of breaks up the monotonous of walking by a really large block. Let's see, what else here? Having public art, I mean, having public art is always another way to help activate the sidewalk and the public space. And also have the public, and maybe people from Emeryville, which is a very well-known art district, kind of contribute to that. So having maybe some kind of, I don't know if it would be a suggestion, or what that, that they consider including somebody from Emeryville when they're considering public art. Another thing is that might help, that I believe helps articulate the building, is always providing an outdoor space for, for each tenant. Not only does that articulate the space, but I feel it helps personalize it. And so, you know, some people might have their, have their plants out there, some people might have like a little table with a grill, and it's always nice to kind of, I kind of always walk by and see what people have in their balconies. And so that, I feel like that activates the neighborhood as well, kind of gives you an idea of, of like, you know, the people that are living there. And I think for right now, that's pretty much it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez. Commissioner Shae?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. So I'd like to echo a few things that Commissioner Mendez said. I think outdoor space is really important, and the more, the better, especially in usable form. So I think there are a few examples of places in Emeryville where there's small bits of outdoor space that are not, are not that charismatic or used as much as maybe they thought, you know, designers thought that they would be originally. So I think that's a, that's a big priority for me. In general, the space between the street and the building, so, you know, sidewalks plus whatever else is gonna be fit in there, I think it's really important to try and make that as usable as possible, and then also to place trees as best possible to minimize heat island effect and, and going along with that. I think anything we can do to reduce like wind tunnel type effects, I think articulation will help with that, but, you know, just in terms of massing and design. So, yeah, I think, for me, probably one of the biggest things is just how you move through the city, thinking about all types of users, especially people who are on foot, on bicycle, with strollers, using wheelchairs, making sure it's accessible. And then one aspect that I think is coming up more and more is the use of either parking spaces or adjacent outdoor spaces for parklets, or for outdoor seating for cafes. And I saw an article at one point recently that there have been some conflicts in some places where people who need to use wheelchairs, for example, are not given a wide enough path anymore because of some of these now outdoor spaces. So just kind of thinking about all the potential uses and trying to maximize both the potential for traveling and then also for other uses as well going forward. Let's see, what else did I have? Yeah, and then just in general, I think the sustainability aspects of the buildings. I'm a little bit unclear about what is considered objective already. I saw in your list of objective standards that already exist, the Climate Action Plan, Active Transportation Plan, and Complete Streets were all listed there. But I'd be interested to know if there are aspects of those that we'd need to further define in order to bring them over to be objective rather than subjective. In general, you know, anything that goes into making a sustainable building that will minimize energy use, maximize efficiency over time after the building is built, I think it would be great to make those objective. So also up there, thank you.
Sorry, I was on to you. Commissioner Keller, do you want to go ahead? Thank you, Commissioner Shae.
As, just to speak to the design aspects of this, we're at the end, we'll have an option to wrap up our thoughts through the, is that my understanding? Okay. So in terms of the design things, I agree with the commissioners who have spoken, where you go to Commissioner Mendez and Shae, that I think the thing we need to concentrate on, that we, we should make objective, is the things in the public realm. We're having a really hard time maintaining our sidewalk widths, and the city doesn't follow its own guidelines in situations. The park across the street can be as one example. So I think that all of those ideas of the public realm should be objective, that we follow the city design guidelines. I like the idea of creating places where people just walking down the street can rest, they're waiting for a signal, or waiting for someone to pick them up. So I think interaction between the people in the city and a, and a building is really important, and I think that's the area to do that. Sustainability is also something that should not be objective, or sustainability goals and our climate action plan should be objective. I think that we can, we can make, and I don't think people would think that particularly on us to, to do that. And I think, beyond that, I'll talk about articulation and form and function of a building. But the thing I'm looking at here is, we're looking at past buildings and things like windows and et cetera, but I don't think, I think what we're doing is we're trying to make a comparison to apples and oranges. And to me, we're comparing market rate housing with affordable housing. And I think there's a vast difference here, and I think, I sat down, I read the whole 63-page report, and the overriding factor I got from this over and over again is the cities were trying to regain control that the states took away because cities, and I don't think Emeryville is a particular problem in this, but cities like Menlo Park, No Valley, Palo Alto, you know, they're the ones that put up these roadblocks to housing, particularly affordable housing. But I still think it looks to me like the city's trying to take back control of what the state had to take away because the cities can't produce the housing. And I think that's the reason I asked for the RENA numbers. We're at the most 60% of our RENA requirements. So we still have a dart of meeting the housing needs. And from what I read in the report, and the direction this has me going in, is that we are trying to take away the ability for developers to make affordable housing and make it more expensive again. But I'll, I'll state that in my closing comments, but I definitely think things we control at the public realm and the sustainability, trash, you know, where the trash is collected, where that thing is kept, the way any building interfaces with the city and the people here, I think those are things we should look at as being objective. The buildings itself, I think we need to be a little more flexible on.
Yes, go ahead, Charlie.
I, I just want to briefly respond to what Commissioner Keller said concerning the making affordable housing more expensive through these objective standards. Obviously, that's not the goal, and hopefully, it won't result in that. But certain laws that, that require us to only use objective standards, such as specifically SB 35, have provisions in them for waivers of our standards. And the primary basis for those waivers is cost. And if it turns out that a particular standard that we have makes it financially infeasible to develop the affordable housing that the developer is hoping to do, they can request a waiver from that standard. So I think they, the system has attempted to address that issue.
Thanks for the clarification, Charlie.
If I can add one more thing. So these standards, we expect to be generally applicable. They would apply to both multifamily market rate projects as well as affordable projects. Now, what some cities are doing is still maintaining their architectural review process. So if you're a market rate project, you could choose to use the objective standards, be compliant with the Housing Accountability Act, and go through this more streamlined review process versus a project that is just looking to meet the spirit of your design guidelines, undergo design review with the planning commission, and go through that discretionary approval. And so in that way, potentially, you know, could have an alternate path than these objective standards.
But in order to take those one or two options, they have to do at least 50% affordable, is that not correct? Otherwise, the market rate project that's not doing, you know, 50% affordable, has to go through a design review process.
Currently, in Emeryville, in order to go through an SB 35 streamline, and you would have to be 50% affordable. And that can change from year to year depending on, on your production.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent, thank you, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Vice Chair Young?
Hi, thank you for the presentation, and I was pretty engaging, and I liked all the comments that showed up on this. I don't know, I find objectivity kind of, kind of interesting, because we've had a history of trying to do affordable housing in many, many, many cities, Seattle, San Francisco, you can go anywhere. And my take on this, with all the efforts that they tried to be so objective in trying to produce these projects, their places now, not, maybe they're probably not even 40 years old, and people just don't want to hang out there, they don't want to go there, it's depressing, it's a battle. But, and I, and I, and it kind of scares me, because if I was to kind of create some kind of objective standard, what I really think is to really get a better understanding how to impact the neighbors. And neighbors are literally everything. You go in there, and you put a structure of some kind, developer comes in and puts an oversized building, impacts the parking, impacts the objective of what people are actually used to, and it's sort of frustrating to see that happen. But what I do find interesting in terms of like, how one might use something productive is probably try to bring back some kind of revival on landscaping, or types of materials, or types of trees, or something native about the area. Maybe how it could be a really strong awareness on shadows, and really strong awareness on really how these, how, you know, maybe use the shadows to effectively be something gray rather than something that's kind of negative in that sense. In terms of, I mean, we got, we got some environmental issues that are happening here in Emeryville, and we shouldn't ignore them, is that, you know, oceans are rising, we've got... we shouldn't ignore them, is that, you know, oceans are rising, we've got to really be careful about, maybe we can do something to the buildings that if they happen to be nearby, covered over a culverted stream, that maybe water features to kind of understand that. And then in terms of the site, you know, I'd really like to see a little bit more play on, like, in the years of the Renaissance, where there was a really strong understanding, we're here in Emeryville, we're here in the era of biotech, we're here in an area of like really strong computer, 3D, all that whole nine yards, and maybe there's a mathematical solution that we can look for, something that would be, rather than just some kind of contrived arbitrary answer, use of color, use of shapes. I mean, that one building in Berkeley, it's kind of interesting, I'm not really, I like it, I think it's kind of, I really found it surprising, but the reason that building looks that way, and if you really think about it, is the fact that site would have been blank for, I mean, many, many years, and it was almost like Holy Grail, and so the architecture looked like that because of that. And so I think if, you know, I think if we have a really strong awareness of like, what that site used to be, might be something that we ought to look at and sense it a little bit further. Those are my comments for now, and thank you very much, great, interesting discussion.
Yeah, thanks, Vice Chair Young. So I think I am the person who is left. So yeah, thank you for the presentation. I did want to note that the way that I would think about the urban environment is that I would say that there are buildings, there are sites, but then there is the public realm. And so there is, and sometimes the site and the public realm are blurred, sometimes that's very intentional, but I think that in terms of thinking about standards for each, that ownership divide is important, whether it's publicly owned or not. So I just keep that in mind. I think the other sort of thought that your presentation provoked is that this is about objective standards, standards by their nature keep the worst from happening, they don't make the best. So when I think to myself, oh, what is, you know, what is the worst thing that could happen with affordable housing, the thing I don't want to see? The thing I don't want to see is a never-ending, unarticulated facade. The thing I don't want to see is, you know, a totally unvaried roof line, which we're getting. So, and I know there is a propensity, and to Commissioner Keller's comment about the market rate versus the affordable, and I think it was in the presentation too, there is a propensity to be economical, to be box-like, to be efficient. And so I think the objective standards really have to work against that tendency, not to stop housing, that's not the objective, but just to make sure that we don't get projects that reverse the progress of deploying, you know, housing and getting housing production. So I think that's really important in terms of some of the building detail. You know, what other Commissioners have said, I think I would agree with a lot of the elements of like, you know, how to say things have to be included, like public art, like trees, these are things we value in the urban environment. If there's a way to set up dependencies, you know, if this, then that, that also might help the worst from happening. I do think, as you presented, the service conflicts are often an issue, that often, if you can begin to be objective about a level of performance for service conflicts, I think that would also help. So I think that's what I'm sort of taking from the presentation and sort of as an introductory thinking around objective standards. And so those are my comments for now, but I know we're going to discuss more, and I'll hand it back to Jane.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and thank you for calling on your colleagues, I appreciate it. We're going to have Jane bring up her screen, and she can, we can look at a summary of what we heard so far, and then continue our discussion a little bit. Look at that.
I'm trying to note everything, and I'm roughly trying to organize between site and building, and it's not working perfectly, so please forgive that, but just know that we're noting these things. And the reason why we're bringing this up is so that you kind of can take in some of the many comments that were made, and I think just to give a quick summary, it sounds like we're really trying to focus on the public realm within, you know, when we're talking about site. We just heard about public art, we just talked about, you know, trees, what's happening in the sidewalk, accessibility, also, you know, activation, street furniture, all of these kinds of things. And then kind of at the bottom, also not to forget about, you know, some other aspects of the environment as a way to inform our design, some of them being more general, but then others being like our climate action plan, or energy efficiency aspects that are very much more specific, so those, trying to address those as well. So this is very general overview of some of the site issues that we just heard, and then for building, I think it's good to have some ability to be unique, and also to, I think this was a great one, to talk about impact to neighbors, and also to make sure it's not a boring, flat building, that there's some variety, and to also address things that really are important to be addressed, that are public facing issues that, you know, also don't reverse the progress of housing production. So hopefully, just by recapping a little bit, it helps us dive a little bit deeper into further discussion about site and building. And I'm going to just take this down in a moment so that you can all kind of still see each other, and we can just continue without looking at all these words.
Actually, can you put it up for us? Sure. I did have a comment.
Yes.
I did want to talk about the sustainability, because it's a bit of a sticky wicket in terms of how to turn that into an objective standard, so I think I will challenge you as the consultants to do that. But I would also not say that it is only a site thing, it is both a site and a building thing, and so should be in both locations.
Okay.
Could I ask, Jane, I believe you had a slide, or a couple of slides, that kind of bullet pointed all of the key design aspects that were then fleshed out in all your other slides. It seems like maybe that would be something good to just put back up as a quick refresher of what the various topics were. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I believe it's this one.
This is where we're going to go next. So I think as you saw on the site side, we talked a fair amount about the street frontage and the sidewalks and the amenity zone, we didn't talk as much about bike facilities, which is something that was raised last time, or our favorite utility screening and utilities, the more screening of, you know, the service areas, which Chair Thompson finished on. But maybe we could get into some of those a little bit deeper, parking, access, the things that people don't always want to see. Do you want to go in the same order again? If so, we could start with Commissioner Findon, or Chair, would you like to continue calling on?
Or if people just want to raise their hands if they have.
Yeah, I think I'd like to just kind of have it open, you know, use the raise your hand function, which I keep telling everyone to use. I did just do that, so I would invite at this time, any of the Commissioners to use the raise your hand function.
I don't see that on my screen where I find the raise your hand.
It's down at the bottom.
I have live script, record, screen share, and participants, that's all I have.
You should have lower hand, raise hand.
Nope, I don't have any of that.
Is he in the wrong bin?
Maybe look in participants.
Well, here, while he's looking for it, while he's looking for it.
He does his hand up.
Okay, I get my hand up. So I think too, we need to really look back at some of these masters of architecture, these guys that really came up with, really, they came up with solutions, and we have a city that's just amazing, we have an opportunity, really, we really do, to kind of get away from what would be ultimately mundane, and who was it that brought up, who was the one that brought up the idea, oh, it was the New, I'll get his name, but he brought up the idea of like, architecture being architecture. There is a sense where shapes and buildings and patterns and relationships between the site and the building, that intersection, that place, that spot where you're there at the human level, and that can be just so engaging and so amazing, and something where we can, we should look at the masters of how, some of the solutions, I mean, we've got Frank Lloyd Wright did that thing, you know, I know they're older buildings, City Hall, the city built by Samurai Field, but if you walk that, you walk around there, and you look at it, and you see how that engages you, and how it really forces you to walk and experience all these different places. It is kind of sort of something neat about our general plan, because our general plan sort of jumps into that. And I just, that's my kind of comment, I think we could play articulated land, terrain doesn't always have to be so flat, we have opportunities to do really cool stuff here, and I just think that that's kind of something we want to really look at. Why don't we have a pyramidal mound somewhere? Why don't we have a 10-foot shell mound that represents a real shell mound rather than some little hill that they build by Bay Street? Why don't we really engage things that really talk to us about who we are and why we're here? Why is there almost no reference to the dog racing that happened in this for, I don't know how long that was, Charlie could probably tell you. But this is, and we talk about art, and we talk about relationships between buildings and art and trees and all this other stuff, I kind of, we're at a really interesting threshold, we're at a really neat place, and something, and I know we're trying to talk about, you know, but these people who are in these situations could in fact be, you know, truly the ideas that are behind what makes your spaces. Okay, I'll stop being so esoteric, thanks.
Can I make a comment that Commissioner Young kind of sparked?
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Mendez.
Yeah, so in my opinion, a good urban space blurs the line between the public and the private. It doesn't have a clear delineation, like this is housing and this is the sidewalk, it's more of a fluid, it's a fluid space. And so a good example for me, and I always bring it up, in Emeryville, is the public or walkway, the greenway, that's what it's called, the greenway. So that's such a great space that a lot of people cut through that, and it feels like it's public, but if you look at it, you're kind of in people's front yard, walking through there, and it's kind of going in and out and in and out, and that, for me, that's a really successful public and private kind of area coming together very well. So an example like that, if that kind of could be utilized more in these buildings, I think it would make it a very successful project.
I would just like to respond to that. Commissioner Mendez, I think that's an excellent observation, and also frankly, a successful example of an objective standard that we currently have. The, I can't recall if it's, I think it's in the North Hollis overlay zone.
Yeah.
Which implements the North Hollis guidelines. It says that when you develop a project along the greenway, you need to set your buildings back at least 15 feet from the property line, and that 15-foot area must be landscaped to appear similar to the greenway, so that if you have buildings on either side of it, you've effectively widened the greenway by 30 feet with landscaping that appears to be like the rest of the greenways, so it gets much wider. If you look at the Liquid Sugar Project specifically, there's a little wooden headerboard that runs through the landscaping that delineates the property line. So you can see on one side of that headerboard, it's private property, on the other side of the headerboard, it belongs to the city, but it has the effect of making the greenway feel much bigger and integrating those private properties with the public realm. And I would argue that that is a very objective standard, and it's been quite successful.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, I'm just tagging on to those, and looking at this, I think we do a good job on the sidewalks, the street frontage, I think the amenity zones, street trees, I think we've made pretty good inroads since the initiation of the new general plan and the updates that we've had from 2009 to 2019. It's not to say that we can't do better with them. I agree that the way we're going the public and private areas is really good, and I agree with Charlie that we can make those objective. The area I have a question on, and I have all along, it goes back to the houses, the homes that have frontage right on to like Powell Street, or right on to 65th Street, and I don't know how you would make that objective of when that's appropriate and when it's not. And the thing is, is a lot of those frontages were not envisioned or desired by the developer, or I remember when we had a planning commissioner who really insisted that people couldn't enter their homes through the garage, that they have to enter from the street. And again, I agree that that's not always appropriate, I don't think those on Powell Street, the blinds are never up on those places, people never use their front doors. 65th, those private patios are screened off, locked off, and it's just not appropriate. But if you look at the public market on 62nd Street, all of those houses, and like, I agree, I walk by and I see, you know, how much plankings they have, and who has barbecues out on their thing, and who has sitting out there, and it's used a lot. And I think that's, I love it, it's, we walk by there and it's just amazing, and we got here's the dog party we have in the park every night. And that is a success of where people have frontage right on the sidewalk, and I didn't think it would really be used, because it's, you know, right on the street, but it's really really used. So I like the idea of making that objective, but how do you make an objective standard subjective to its location? And that's where I have a difficulty figuring out, how do we say you need to do this, but, you know, who decides where it's appropriate or it's not if you have it as an objective? Anywhere along the greenway, yeah, it should be done, you know, houses shit in front and come out onto that greenway. But really, I don't think anybody wants to face Powell Street and, you know, look at all that stuff on there. So that's, I like everything that you said, I think we're doing a good job, I think that there is, I just don't know how we make objective standards subjective to particular locations.
Well, you can, if I may just interject, you can require certain things along certain streets. I mean, the general plan classifies your street as various categories of, you know, transit streets versus local streets and things like that. So you could have some standards that apply, say, on local streets that didn't apply on transit streets or something, something like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see houses opening up to Hollis, you know, per se, but on Morton, I could see that happening. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Chaff, I know you had your hand up, do you want to say something?
Yeah, no, I think it's basically been answered. I just wanted to clarify, because Charlie cited the properties along the greenway as being a good example of objective standards that exist already, but I know that there was some comment in the background document, the study document, about the fact that we have a lot of different specific district plans in the city, and that perhaps it was best to streamline those and, you know, get rid of the plans themselves and pull out those objective elements that we liked. And I think that's exactly what Commissioner Keller just addressed, is, you know, how we do that. But I just, I'd appreciate some clarity about where that discussion stands, and whether the city council had weighed in on that at all.
I'm sorry, weighed in on what? On the district plan question?
Yeah, and whether to take the element, some elements out of those and make them citywide to streamline the planning process.
I think we pretty much made that a part of our consultants' work program to do that. And we didn't explicitly ask the city council that question, but I think at staff level we do feel that there are a lot of good ideas in the district. we do feel that there are a lot of good ideas in the district plans, but some of them, it's like, why does that only apply in this part of town? It could apply everywhere. We, the consultants are going to be looking at that.
Okay, so maybe since I'm, I am speaking now, maybe I'll just say that, you know, that I think my perspective on that is that, um, I like this idea that, you know, the landscaping and these big setbacks, um, really help along established paths, and so maybe, you know, from my perspective, what would be best is to create more of these sort of neighborhood feeling paths or streets, um, throughout the city to break it up and have these kind of, you know, sort of unique areas we can walk through. Just south of what's shown here in the, I guess it's the third picture with the bike racks, there's a, um, maybe it's a little, like, one or two streets south, but there's a little path that goes between the Greenway and Hollis, and my kids call it the secret path, and they love it, and, um, and, you know, just more things like that, where, you know, there are different ways to move around the city and find unique spaces, even if they are right next to a housing development of some sort, I'm all for that.
Well, to your predecessors' credit, that path was required by the planning commission as part of the approval of the Glass House project.
Well done.
Nice.
So, so I'm gonna take the floor for a moment. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the, the picture right here, I mean, this question of setback, um, you know, on the left, you have a building that has no setback, it is, you know, it's a historic, efficient industrial building. But it's still done quite nicely, so you can, you could have a nice quality building with no setback. So the question that I have is, is, you know, if, if the focus is, you know, these objective standards, the goal is to keep the worst from happening, you know, what I'm wondering is, is a zero setback building the worst? Or is, you know, do we want a uniform setback standard for the, um, city, citywide? Or do we not, based on our heritage? Or is there a dependency, you know, if this, then that, um, that needs to be enacted in certain places? Because I do think that, um, there is a concern about objective standards creating uniformity, um, and that some of the things that people are really excited about is the diversity and variety, and, and that's really from, from the historic layering, um, that's really from, you know, a specific consideration, um, you know, as well as sort of, you know, a unique design solution, so, but that's not what standards do, standards don't give you the unique design solution, um, they keep the worst from happening. So, so I think my concern would be that if you were to make a citywide uniform setback, that then everything would become uniform over time, um, and so I think I, I just would, would say that's something that needs to be considered carefully.
May I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I think from my perspective, what is desirable is to have a sufficiently wide sidewalk area as opposed to necessarily a zero setback or a uniform setback, and so one of the objective standards that we currently have, which is as of now only in the North Hollis area, but could easily be expanded to be citywide, and I think it's only on Hollis Street, for some reason, is that the sidewalk area must be at least fifteen feet wide, and, um, in much of the Hollis Street corridor, the curb is only seven or seven and a half feet from the property line. What that means is that development along that corridor has to be set back from the property line a sufficient distance to create a fifteen-foot-wide sidewalk area, and then the portion of the sidewalk area that is on private property, uh, becomes a public access easement, and you will see that at the Emery Station Greenway project, uh, you'll see that across the street at the Emery Station East project, you'll also see that at the Glass House project at Sixty-Fifth Street. And between the Glass House project and the Emery Station Greenway project on the east side of Hollis, you'll see that the sidewalk is very narrow past all of those existing buildings. And the way that wide sidewalks was achieved at Glass House and Emery Station Greenway was by setting the building back and putting a portion of the sidewalk on the private property. So, if you already have a sufficiently wide sidewalk on your street, then perhaps you don't need to set the building back. So, in my opinion, the key is to create the sidewalk, uh, depending on, you know, what you need to do to get that, maybe you need to set the building back, or maybe you don't.
Okay, yeah, and, and I do think that in general, there has been some good thinking on the zoning, you know, making sure that there's a planting zone, making sure that there's street furniture, as well as a clear path, um, so I, I would say that that appears in some of the, in some of the regulations that could easily be objective, you know, made into objective standard citywide. Okay, I know Tito had his hand up, but I know Commissioner Keller would also like to speak, so why don't we go, Vice Chirion?
Uh, mine was just really short, I, um, Commissioner Karen Thompson, thank you very much, I, I, I just wanted to reflect on a thought that you made, I really liked how you saw the example where, and Charlie kind of played on it, but I really liked how you saw the example of where having zero setback can be quite nice, and having a setback also can be quite nice, but, um, you know, we were, you, you got to think about what, what happened in, in these days when they put these buildings up. Of course, they were efficient, massive structures of what they were, and it, 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 every city has it, and every city is trying to be contextual with the building next to it. So maybe, you know, maybe i, i, if you, if you have a building that's set, you're street set, you're going down, you know, it's like a raceway, and then you have an undulation where it actually comes in and becomes an area. If you have an objective, the problem is that it won't, what I'm worried about is that it won't allow you to take advantage of it, then you're kind of stuck with a solution that is forced on you, or it's a given solution versus a possible lost opportunity, and that's basically what I think, um, is what, what, what the, what the risk is here, and I think that's what we need to think about. All right, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Chirion, uh, Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I just wanted to really appreciate what you both were saying and, and agree with you, which is, uh, I think, so to give the consultants some guidelines, I think what I'm hearing to agree with is that it's more important to make sure we have the sidewalk widths that we desire, you know, eight, as far as I know, some places are the required, the minimum requirement. And the thing with requiring setbacks is you can end up creating a suburban look-in field instead of an urban look-in field, and, um, from my experience working on the general plan and everything I've done is, is we're really striving for a comfortable, walkable, pleasant urban environment, not a suburban environment. So I think the example of the garage here, a park on Powell's, is a good example of how that works, and I, I think that's, the key thing is just making sure, again, the, the public realm, the pedestrian area, I think is the key factor, and if we have to make a building setback five feet in order to get that, I, I don't have that problem, but to me, it's predicated by making the sidewalk wider, not having a minimum setback for a building, so I agree that if it's a zero-out line, and it's appropriate for the building, I'm thinking of the Sherman Williams Building, you know, the one that passed the student original building, that's a great building, I wouldn't want to see anything happen with that building, and it's right on sidewalk, and it's, it stays that way. So that's just reiterating, kind of giving you guys some, hopefully, some ideas of what we're talking about.
Um, I, I, just at this time, I just wondered if we want to look at any of the other examples, I know there are a couple others there, with, any of the commissioners, is there anything you want to speak to specifically about the building design, and I can't read the other ones?
Yeah, I think this is a good time to shift to the building design issue, um, we're gonna try to close by no later than eight-thirty. So, here, as Jane expressed in the, in the post-it notes, we talked a lot about, heard a lot about a desire for articulation, potentially from stepping back or stepping back, um, not having these flat fronts, facades, whatever that means, it could be the windows or other types of articulation, but maybe we could talk about a few more details about successful or unsuccessful projects that you've seen, um, and if you want, we can bring up some of those slides again.
Can you see it now? Yeah, we can. Okay, great. Yeah. Um, are there any commissioners who want to address this right now? Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I could take a stab, but again, this to me is what kind of rings to the more, you know, affordable housing as afford, to market rate housing, the more, I mean, to do brick facades, of course, it's going to be a lot more expensive than doing stucco. So I think, I'd like to see a lot more flexibility in that the objection standards do not become, and I don't want to use the word draconian, because I, that's not where we're going with this, but I think we need to have a lot more flexibility in an affordable housing unit not having to do so much. Like, the, the top picture here is the Albon, and they have a courtyard in that, their intention here was to make these look like two separate buildings, I think to ask an affordable housing project to do something that severe is going to really push the pricing up on that, so it's just, it's what I brought up earlier, is that I think we need to really keep in mind, we're trying to create housing that people who are under, not the property line, but under the median housing can't afford, and so, you know, my dream eventually is that some of these apartments turn into condos, and some of these people could be homeowners, and I just think if the building is expensive, if we do too many family-friendly, you know, requirements, and, you know, the finishes and it's articulated, it just becomes that something a developer's not going to be able to sell at a price that a single mother can afford. So that's pretty much my, I understand what we want to do, we don't want a flat building and et cetera, but I think we just need to be careful how we do this so that we can actually get some affordable housing built. That's it, thanks.
Thanks. Um, I think, I think I'd like to, you know, comment a bit about this one, um, I, I do think this question about a maximum facade length and a proportioning system, um, you know, there are a lot of people who argue about the ideal proportioning system, and I would say that is, that is not the place of regulations to, to identify an ideal proportioning system, but it is the place of regulations to, to, again, stop the worst from happening, to stop the never-ending, you know, facade from happening, the, the, the so efficient that, that you don't, it, it's not desirable, it's not, um, it's not really a, you know, a life-affirming living space. So, I think I leave it up to the consultants about, um, and staff, um, to finding, you know, a, a sort of what Emeryville's ethos might be regarding that, but I, I do think that there is a maximum length, um, that might need to be tested out, um, on commissioners and city council and other, you know, people who are seeing these projects come forward, because I, I am concerned that facade lengths get monotonous, um, and too similar for, for too much, you know, too much length. I think the other question about, about the, the variation in the roof line, um, you know, given that the two that we saw that came forward, now one is not designed, it is just a massing, um, and, and roof line does add cost, for sure, um, but I think, I think it should be taken on as well, as, in terms of saying, you know, how much is too much in terms of, um, having a, a similar roof line that has no variation.
I believe, if I may, this building at the lower right corner, which has a very long continuous roof line, uh, is at Fifty-first and, and Broadway in North Oakland, um, and actually, it, where it differs is that it's built on a hill, so that if you look further down the hill, you can see it's like five stories, and up here it's like four, and I think it varies by a couple of stories as you go up the hill, but the roof is, is like, continuous. So, I, I mean, this is sort of the antithesis of what you're talking about, and I'm sure that...
Yeah, although, I mean, I think that upper-level setback question, and then the puncture through that line, you know, there, there's some massing tricks that are going on there, despite the continuity, um, which, which I think could be, could be thought of.
Well, it's kind of the base, middle, top concept here, in a way.
So th, those are my priority thoughts, I don't know if others want to add in?
I, I could, I could just add a little bit too, and, um, in, in my sense, you know, why do buildings always have to have, you know, why do they always have to be boxes? And in, in this particular case, in the middle one, we see, we see that this design attempts to put these balconies in and cuts that corner away, but, you know, I don't, I don't want to see that as an objective, even if it is affordable housing, this, this just kind of goes back, and it just kind of reads to me, kind of like, you know, you're forced Russian building, you know, that looks exactly, they could make it for the masses, and I, yeah, but, but, you know, I, I'd like to see, um, something even more creative, why, why couldn't, why couldn't it be where if we left it completely open, we have some opportunities, some wonderful curves that would happen in the middle levels, or that middle, that middle band could be a curve, and then it would be straight on the top, or vice versa, why couldn't, you know, i, i, if, if, if there's a construction technique, and this really comes down to construction technique, there are techniques in construction that can, you know, offset the costs, I mean, we do know this, and it isn't always going to be stucco being the worst construction that you could look for, there's some really great examples, well, one could use stucco, problems, you got to paint it a lot, and, um, the, the, the brick facade, well, there's brick facade, but then there's brick veneer, so the, the question, the question then comes into, well, we're not even using real materials anymore, we're using mixed materials, we're mixed with, with, you know, artificially created, it's cementous material that has texture, that looks like something, so, so, um, so I hate to see materials being a, 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 an area of what you're forcing to do, do something in, I'm, um, I, I like to see the play and the interplay that really is something ultra-creative company, it'd be not, it'd be neat to say, well, if you, like someone to say, if you've seen this before, you can't build it here, you know, kind of, that sort of, yeah, I like that, I mean, that's, that's, if you've seen it before, and, and Charlie, I think, um, I think you kind of hit a lot of things on the head, and I, I know, you know, you and I, it, it's, it's interesting how you have the same thoughts, and I, and I, and I love how we, we are looking at this city as something really neat, I mean, I think it's really kind of special, and I agree with you, Charlie, on the great, on, on this great, on this building in Oakland, yeah, absolutely, that's a play on, it's a trick, uh, and by the way, that brick on that building that you were referring to, is, if you look closer, you walk up to it, it's not brick, it's printed clay that has brick, brick lips on it, so, so anyway, um...
You'll have to go take a look at that.
All right, okay, you guys, thank you.
Well, and one, one thing I do want to bring forward, um, one of Commissioner Keller's comments about, um, about the suburban versus urban feel, um, you know, the, the overuse of a setback could potentially trigger a suburban feel, and, and I think that's probably true, um, an overuse of a setback in a building as well. So, so facade depth is important for variety, but it's also important to show sort of heft in bulk, that's the fitting of, of an urban environment, so, so I wanted to also just add that to thinking about the buildings.
Commissioner Simons has his hand up.
Yeah, I'm just scrolling through my things, uh, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Simons. Thanks, folks, yeah, so, I just wanted to echo a couple things that I really agree on, uh, so, I thought your comments about, um, varying roof line heights were very, very important, um, and I hope the consultants and city staff can really, you know, help us lay out some various options, um, and how those could influence how much housing production, um, or how feasible buildings are, um, I think I'm also a little wary about the setback, Emeryville is an urban place, um, and I think to make housing affordable towards climate apocalypse, uh, the only way this is going to work is if Emeryville becomes much more urban, um, so I'd rather, uh, really focus on trying to build as many parks as possible, and then also give as many people as possible the opportunity to live here, um, and the way to do that is to build right to the outline, I, I live in one of those buildings, um, I think it's great, I think it looks good, um, I know we've all seen examples in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Simons. Uh, Commissioner Mendez?
Yeah, I had a, um, like, just a quick idea, because I keep on hearing, um, the setbacks being brought up, and, um, what if there was some guideline that said, um, I mean, And what if there was some guideline that said, you know, if your building is 300 feet long or whatever, 70% of that building front needs to have a setback? So that way, it's a little bit more flexible for the developer and the designer to determine how that 70%, or whatever, you know, percentage, how they would use that. And it wouldn't be a continuous setback, it's more, it can be dispersed within the, whatever, how many feet, however they want. And it kind of helps also with breaking up the facade and, and creating articulation. So instead of they, you have to have this setback, it's more of, your setback has to be this much for this percent of your, of your, of your building. That's just kind of an idea that popped in.
So I don't see anybody else with their hands up, were there other topics that we wanted to cover?
Well, one thing that I'd like to do is I'd like to end the discussion looking at the two examples again. I don't know if we're there yet, I don't want to cut off anyone, is there other, other comments?
The two SP35 examples?
Yeah.
Yeah. We just thought that this was a good opportunity for the commission, based on real experience that you had, reviewing real projects that are subject to these objective standards. Was there something about it that you really wished we had that we didn't have? Or is there something you wish we had going forward, these projects? I will, I'll mention one thing, which is about street trees. We looked through our guidelines, and we didn't find much about street trees. But we were very fortunate that the San Pablo Avenue Urban Design Plan, which was adopted by the city, or actually by the redevelopment agency in the 90s, but it's incorporated by reference into the general plan, so it still has some validity. It has some very specific criteria about street trees in it. So it just was for the San Pablo corridor, fortunately. So we were able to impose those objective standards about how many street trees there had to be, and what their spacing had to be, and even what the suggested species were in that particular location. So that's a kind of a thing that, that we were looking for, and we fortunately found it here, but we don't have that all throughout the city.
Does this drawing represent that, or would they have additional?
I'm not sure.
Because sometimes there's creative license with the renderings, that's why I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they had regular, I mean, there may have been a reason why there were no trees in the middle, there might have been some constraint or something. But I think they pretty much were following, I mean, Navar may be able to... Ah, Navar's got their hand raised.
Oh.
I wouldn't, I don't know specifically if the drawing is 100% accurate. My assumption is not, because there's existing street trees, and then there'll be new street trees added as well. And there are nuances that I don't think we need to get into tonight, but have to do with level of street lighting that also has to be provided, and making sure that there's a balance between all of those things.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, Miley thought about this particular example was, was that it is fairly flat. There, you know, there are some tricks going on in terms of the amassing. And I think one of the, one of the points that we had in discussion was, was a lack, the lack of depth around windows and balconies. And I don't, I don't know, I just remember that it was a bit tied to the outdoor space, but I think there was also this question about, about, you know, the personalization that balconies create. And, and so, I, I don't know if other commissioners remember more about the conversation, but I do remember those things coming up.
Yeah, I remember that conversation, and so we, and I remember we had asked them that at the minimum, to allow the windows to be operable, to allow, you know, the tenants to control that. But yeah, I do remember that was a big talk, the, the outdoor space for this.
Yeah, if I might add, they, they did, I remember I don't know if it was Commissioner Mendez or something, or it might have been either, you know, one of the other commissioners. But they did come back and say that doing balconies would not be feasible economically. But that they did agree to do the opening windows, if I remember correctly. The thing that I remember about this project, and it might be because the city was contributing funds to this, so I don't know if that gave us more of a leeway in talking about this building, but I did find them responsive. And they were bringing a white building to us that had art maybe in one or two places. So I think they were quite responsive, I think the base was changed because of information we gave. It's, you know, it's recessed, I think it's board for, board for concrete. They did darken the color, I think the windows ended up getting a little bigger, and they added more art. So I think they did listen to us, but I don't know if that was courtesy, or if they thought the ideas were good enough to implement and affordable, or whether it was we were kicking in money to the program that they gave to us. But I felt this project, considering it's an affordable, 100% affordable, they listened, and they, and they made some changes, and they actually addressed, you know, the balconies. At least that we would like to see outdoor space. Since the outdoor space is very minimal, and this neighborhood, as we know, is really deficient breed space. But they said it just economically wasn't feasible to create, you know, an affordable unit, units and put in balconies. So, but again, I don't know how flexible they were, because we were supplying some funds, or they were just not really good ideas. But I thought this was very good.
And Charlie, maybe you can address what they were required to do, do with the funding?
Yeah, yeah, I just did want to say something about that. Well, the planning agreement with them actually hired two planning commission study sessions, one community meeting, and one city council study session. So even though this was a ministerially approved project based on objective standards, it got a lot of public input and review. I would say that in, in the procedures and standards that we are developing, we are strongly leaning towards requiring the planning commission study session, even for projects that are subject to objective standards. And we can do that under, under SP35 and the HCD guidelines. It does say you can have, you can have both design review, as long as it's objective, and you can also have the planning commission play a role. So I think they wouldn't necessarily have to do what the planning commission recommends, but personally, and I get the sense from all of you as well, I found those two planning commission study sessions for this project to be invaluable. They still had to comply with objective standards. None of the objective standards that we had changed as a result of those study sessions, but I think the project improved immensely. And I think developers would be willing to listen to suggestions that the commission has. It also gives the public an opportunity to weigh in on these projects that they normally wouldn't have. And at the end of the day, basically, they can still do what they want, as long as they follow the objective standards. But I think the commission's suggestions are invaluable. And I think, you know, developer would be crazy not to heed your suggestions.
Thanks, Charlie. Vice Chair Young, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, and, and, but one thing I wanted to say here too, is that, as, as, as this building, it's pretty gorgeous, I mean, it has, it has some, it's, it's good, I mean, it, it's good for what it is, but there's a lot of room for improvement. And there's a lot of room for the kinds of buildings that we could build in the future that would be a lot... I mean, would we want every building of this scale to have that kind of artwork and copied over and over again as a, as a cookie cutter? No. I think just, I think I can talk to all the commissioners here, probably not. Would we want to have, would we want to have possible articulation with these volumes of dark spaces and light spaces and spaces in between? Maybe. But, but there, there's a lot of potential here that this particular project shows. But we want to leave ourselves with enough room to allow creativity to flourish, even if it is a building that's used, because we, because these buildings are large. They, it, you, you, you could put a white elephant in the room, and no matter what color you paint it, you'll always see it there. So it, it gotta be, you gotta be really creative and thinking about how to really hold this off. And I think if we're gonna leave a message in regards to what we're trying to pull off here, this is very poignant, is we gotta think about what we're doing here, because this can be stuck with something you don't want to have, or have too many of. It's kind of like, it's kind of someone brought this thing with, you know, wow, one bird, one hummingbird is so cute, two hummingbirds are so cute. But boy, when you have 50 hummingbirds, they're not so cute anymore. All right. Okay, guys.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young. Are there people wishing to speak?
Could we just see, could we just see the other project we're thinking about?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, got it, thank you. I guess...
If I may, this is one that there's still an opportunity to influence, because this project has not been even submitted formally yet. I have not made my ministerial decision on it yet. And so there's still some time if we want to develop some additional objective standards that this project will be subject to.
Commissioner Simons, did you have...
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
No problem at all. Yeah, I just wanted to make a general comment. I think, you know, obviously, getting these buildings right is incredibly important. But equally important is getting the streets that they're on right. And I think we all know that through our hard work and the omnibus transportation commission, we can make San Pablo much more livable streets. And I know that the city, you know, and our neighboring cities are really committed to doing that. I think we just, it's important the planning commission and our municipal city council really keep our eye on the ball to move those sorts of projects, you know, as quickly as possible and get the best possible design out of them.
So yeah, so I, the only comment I would add to this one is, you know, it's, it's clearly amassing. We don't know what the facade is yet. But in terms of some of the things that, and some of the comment at the time is that this, this is sort of taller and bulkier than our regulations had ever imagined. However, I think it was still favorably received due to the, the level of articulation that is suggested, that there, there isn't a blank full wall. And also the setback on the, is that western, western end? And so, so I know the conversation at the time was that, that the economics of the projects may actually suggest a shorter solution. And our regulations certainly suggested a shorter regulation, resolution. But in terms of the initial moves of variation of the facade and creating some depth to it, the initial moves of creating a setback were, were seen as desirable in that conversation.
If I can share a topic again?
Sure.
Go ahead. If we're gonna do objective standards, I think this is a, a good place where we can work at objective standards for the sidewalk and for street trees. Because what they're showing here, in terms of sidewalk, it's always hard to tell. It needs to be, you know, what we regulate, whether it's 15 or eight foot clear. But the amount of trees that were shown here are not on that street at all, I don't believe. But I think it's important that they, they do something like that. So I think to follow the objective standards of what our city guidelines are for sidewalks and planting public amenities, you know, benches and trash cans, stuff like that. I think if we can set those in time for this building, I think that would be helpful.
And Charlie, a question for you. You mentioned the landscaping for San Pablo, an on-center meter for the trees. Do you remember the dimensions of that?
I believe it was 25 feet on center, 20 or 25 feet on center, which is kind of the city standard anyway. But I mean, that's when the city plants trees, that's kind of what is used. But I don't believe it's in our regulations anywhere, except on the San Pablo corridor.
Okay, and this might even be less than that, by the looks of it, but...
Well, yeah, in their renderings, they always try to show lots of trees.
Sure.
I, I did want to bring up, I haven't heard it mentioned yet, but if I could, I'd just like to bring up the question of undergrounding utilities. You may recall that the 3600 San Pablo project agreed to underground the existing utilities along, I believe it was 37th Street, Side Street there. And also, the fire department indicated that they would probably require that anyway, because of the, the existing wires would have interfered with their ability to get a ladder truck up against the building. But we don't have any explicit regulation that says that utilities must be undergrounded. And so, there are overhead utilities here along Adeline Street, and there was some discussion with the previous project on this site about requiring that. And ultimately, I think the, the commission did not impose that as a requirement. But I'm just wondering how you all would feel about requiring all existing overhead utility wires along a project frontage to be undergrounded. And I would note that if that is too expensive and makes the affordable housing project financially infeasible, they could ask for a waiver from that requirement.
I like that for every project, I think we should underground utilities of every new project. Just as far as we want to go through Berkeley, they have all these new projects and all these wires sitting up. And I think this city has done a great job of getting their utilities undergrounded. So I believe that, and, you know, maybe rather than waiving it, we waive something else in order to give them the funds to do the underground. Say, I think that's pretty key to making our city, it's safer, it brings everything underground, so you don't lose towers often, you don't have conflicts with trees, you know. I hate it when they cut a tree into a V so power lines can go through it, it's just tragic, I think. So undergrounding to me is by one of the most important aspects of new projects that we should be doing.
That's helpful.
Other comments?
I'd like to second that also. I think that is important, and then, especially for projects this size, having the utilities go underground and having them require that is, is important to just make our city look nicer. So I would second that.
Ali, would, if you did that, would you, does it just go underground for the property? And it just stops at the property, and then it becomes wire again? I don't, I don't understand how that's carried out down the block.
I believe that would have to be the case. I don't think we could require them to underground anything that wasn't along their frontage. So yes, it would be challenging to implement. Now, I will say, if a project required development bonuses, and which, and that is a little bit tricky, because these projects, these SP35 projects, by definition, are ministerial and not subject to development bonuses. So they couldn't take advantage of this. But say a market rate project that wasn't an SP35 project, but that was subject to an objective standard that required undergrounding of utilities along their frontage, they could, if they needed to develop bonus points, they could potentially get some of those bonus points by undergrounding the rest of the block. And that is explicitly listed in the planning regulations as an area for bonus points. So we require them to underground them on their frontage, and then we could, they could get bonus points for doing the rest of the block. Again, that wouldn't apply to a SP35 project, because they can't get, they don't need bonus points. But it could apply to market rate projects.
Thank you. Thanks. Navar, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just for some context on how that works, about what the frontage, when things are undergrounded, is that a lot of work is coordinated between fire and public works and the building division to figure out the logical terminus and where to locate a new pole if it needs to be located. So this is a highly coordinated effort, and is standard practice.
Okay. Yeah, and I would, I would third the undergrounding as a, as a option, as a preferred condition. Commissioner Chee?
I'll forth that, and I'm just saying that I have no concept of how much that undergrounding would cost as a percentage of a total project, and whether it would potentially make something infeasible. Like, I just don't have that sense.
Isn't it, it's a lot, I mean, it's a lot.
Yeah, I have a sense that...
It's not cheap.
It's a challenge.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah, I think... I mean, I do think it's a tough one, then. If it, you know, if it had the potential to stop a project or stall a project, that's hard. But I feel like the benefits probably outweigh almost all of the negatives, unless it really did stop the project. Because there are so many benefits from undergrounding, and it is a piecemeal process, as we've seen across the city. It has to happen sometime.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying that maybe we can waive something else. I mean, it's a give and take. So maybe if we really go underground, the utilities are there, then we, you know, let them do a flat roof or, you know, something else, you know. We figure out what is the most important key element to get. Get that and let the others go or something. But just, you know, to add on to that, Commissioner Chay, and to let Commissioner Young know, everything in this town pretty much is done incrementally, block by block. The things we have gotten done in Emeryville is done, block by block by block. The reason we have undergrounded almost all my home neighborhood is every time the area developed, it went underground. So the way we get sidewalks... When I first moved to Emeryville, Avenue 64 wasn't here. It was a telephone pole practice station. And there was no sidewalk there. Now there is a sidewalk. So the way we get things done in this town is project by project.
Yeah.
There is a map in the general plan that shows where utilities are undergrounded and where they are not undergrounded. So you can kind of see at a glance where we need to focus our efforts.
And just if I can add one more thing to that, just personally, I'm the first house on... Or the last house, if you look at it that way, between undergrounding and not undergrounding. And I often do not lose power when my neighbors who have above-ground line do lose power. So who knows if it's because of that or not, but I suspect it could be. So definitely in favor of that.
Commissioner Simons, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think we should absolutely require the undergrounding. We've seen many projects successfully be able to make it happen. And if it's too expensive, they can get out of it anyway. So, yeah, disagreeing with others. Thanks.
You know, wait a minute. So wait a minute. So if you decide that you're gonna build a basement in a building or you're gonna put... You have to tear up the sidewalk anyway. You're gonna bring all that equipment in there to put a six-story or a seven-story building in there. You're telling... Why is the... I guess maybe Navarre knows this answer, but there seems to be... There seems to be something missing. I mean, sort of... I kind of wonder why it isn't done as part of cost anyway. I'm kind of thinking about that. Maybe Stephen knows. I don't know.
Navarre wants to answer this question, so you want to go ahead?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding your...
Okay, okay.
So you're saying when you tear up a sidewalk and everything, you have a whole new project, then...
Yeah. Why isn't it just part of it anyway? I mean, it's sort of...
Right. That's standard practice, actually. So it is... All the... Let me give you an example. The 1225 60 Fifth Street project, where the Commission recently looked at that as part of a study session. The building is required to have undergrounding of wires in front of it because it's over 30 feet tall by fire code. It's not a debatable situation. Like, they have to, because fire response demands it. And so it is incorporated into the project that they have to do full new curb gutter sidewalk, as you were talking about. And that goes along with what we've been talking about, sidewalk standards, street trees.
Right.
And structure. Something additionally that has to be considered is location of transformers and where to put those. And that's the sort of thing that needs to be decided very early in the process, because it can modify building utility and structure. So, for example, for 3600 San Pablo Avenue, there were hours and hours and hours of meetings, because it's a very constrained site. So there were lots of considerations for things that we don't really talk about at any commission very much. So where to locate the transformer, it'll have to be above ground. Where was that gonna go in the building? Where were fire pumps required? Where were those gonna go? And how... If you have to scoop that over a little bit, well, that just changes everything, right? It's a...
Right. Everything. Right, right.
So we can't get into that kind of minutia in Planning Commission, right? Because it's very technical and also highly constrained, right? Like, it's a situation of trade-offs, not like design preference. But I'm just trying to fully answer the question that, yes, all of these things are considered together in its coordinated effort. And much like the other answer I gave a few minutes ago, it requires coordination between building, between fire, between public works, and between painting. All of us have to work together to make sure that those things are addressed. But it's standard for every project to have that coordination. Does that help answer your question?
It does. And so when it was to second, third, and fourth, you know, to kind of say that this would be... This would happen, and then you would get a flat roof because you didn't have to pay for it, or is this something that you separate out? Is it a line item that you would be able to then separate out a cost to? Oh, boy. I don't even want to get into that. But let's say the cost... The building cost A and the site work cost B. And you have one of these low-income housings, and they say, okay, we're only gonna do A and we're not gonna do B. How does that work?
Well, I think, just to quick clarification, I mean, I think some of the question is, you know, where are things objective standards? And where are things part of project development and review? Because I think the departmental review is part of a standard process, which is different than objective standards. And maybe, Charlie, you can weigh in on that.
Well, it's complicated. I mean, I would say that every project is subject to the building code and the fire code. And those are generally considered to be ministerial. There's not a lot of discretion in those. And so regardless of it's SB 35 or not, they've gotta follow the building code and the fire code. So if any of this is dictated by those codes, basically, you just have to do that. Planning regulations, of course, are more subjective by their nature. That's why we're having this discussion today. I would like to say to Commissioner Keller's point about, you know, undergrounding is so important to us that we don't want to waive that one, but we'll waive something else instead. I'm not sure we have that option. I think the developers, I mean, and I would defer to our consultants and attorneys on this point. And I don't know that we need to get into it in detail right now. But it's something we can go back and noodle on, which is that I believe if a developer requests certain things to be waived because it makes the project financially infeasible or it constrains them so they can't develop as many units as they want, I think the city is obligated to consider that particular waiver that they've requested. There may be some room for negotiation. We may be able to suggest to them, well, why don't you ask for a waiver for this thing instead of that thing? And do that thing instead of this thing? I'm not sure that we have the flexibility under state law to enter into a negotiation like that. But it's something that we can think about.
Okay, I also want a clarification. I don't know if it's waivers or the other... An amount or a limited number of what they could ask for?
Well, there's... Yeah, that's another point of confusion. There are concessions and there are waivers.
Okay.
They are limited to a certain number of concessions, depending on how many affordable units they're providing. It's... Some of them, it's like a four.
It's terribly convoluted.
Waivers typically are unlimited. Concessions are based on cost, and the waivers are based on the ability to provide the number of units on the site. In other words, it's a physical thing. So waivers are based on physical.
Okay.
Concessions are based on financial things. It gets pretty complicated. I think the attorney would like to chime in.
Yeah, Christie, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thanks, Charlie. Yeah, I just... I don't want to, you know, kind of get in the weeds here, but I will, you know, say that, you know, Charlie's correct. There are concessions and waivers in density bonus law. But the objective standards, you know, before you tonight, I think the purpose of this study session is to just kind of get a feel for what's important to the commissioners. And, you know, yes, you're correct, and you're identifying important issues that do arise in terms of, you know, when certain standards could be waived and by what type of project. But that is something that, you know, the city would have to evaluate on a project-by-project basis. And kind of going through this exercise in a vacuum is, you know, it's difficult for Charlie or for me to kind of pinpoint and answer to, you know, a hypothetical question like that. So I would just want to reiterate that the objective standards that are going to apply to, you know, all projects in the city, the purpose of those... I think that you've identified the, you know, constraints in terms of, you know, they can tend to suggest uniform, you know, or promote uniformity and that kind of thing. But I would say that it's important to kind of note that you're going through this process in order to get the best objective standards that we can. And then, on a project-by-project basis, you know, the city and staff and the projects that do end up coming before you, we would have to evaluate individual projects on individual bases and determine whether, you know, state law waivers apply or not. So it's a little hard to kind of determine right now on the fly like this, but you've raised, you know, good, important questions. And I think it's probably best to steer the conversation back to, you know, providing feedback to our consultants.
And on this subject, it seems like undergrounding is already required, right, Charlie? So they'd have to ask for a waiver for that.
Well, no. It isn't explicitly required in our code anywhere. That's why I asked for your opinion about it. Typically, we do it on a project-by-project basis as a condition of approval. As Navarre said, sometimes it's required by the fire code, but not always. And so it's an open question right now as to whether particular projects are required or not. And I think we'll...
I think we voted not officially that pretty much we all would like to see that undergrounding be done. And this building is going to be over 30 feet, so I think the fire code's gonna require that they do it anyway. So we kind of covered on this particular building, so we can move on.
Well, maybe. I think perhaps it could also involve whether the... There's other places to access it from. I don't know. I saw Navarre's hand. I don't know if they have some...
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's something that we would like the consultants to take on. I think that's the answer.
Yeah, we clearly, we heard that loud and clear.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, no, and I think, you know, we do need to officially close the study session and the meeting itself. Gene and Jane, have you gotten what you need from us?
Yes, we got a lot of really great feedback. Jane, you want to help us do a quick summary of what we heard in the latter part of the presentation? And then we'll...
Yes. I'll just do this really quickly. I wrote down all the things that you said. You know, they're starting to kind of group up. And it's, you know, the feedback you provided tonight, I'm not really gonna read through all of it right now, because you just all heard it. You know, this really does help us deepen what we've been focusing on and really helps us provide... You really provided us with a lot of direction tonight. So I want to thank you for that. And we really appreciate all the things that you have said and your time tonight. It's really great conversation.
Yeah. Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And any last comments from a commissioner?
I enjoy these two. Oh, go ahead, Erica.
No, no, no. I just want to say that being a designer myself, I'm really excited to be able to contribute to art, to my city, and something like this. So I thank you, and I really do appreciate you allowing us to give you feedback and input.
Vice Chair Young, thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Vice Chair Young?
Yeah, you two are really great. Thank you for just... Just keep in mind that, you know, there's been a long history of mistakes with this. So please look at the mistakes. Look at places that are bad. I mean, literally. And if you have to get on an airplane and go see some brownstones near St. Louis or something, please do.
Not sure that's in their scope, but they'll do that on purpose if we want to.
Didn't I say... Who would I send out to Amsterdam for some bike rides? Oh, God, visit the streets of... But, yes. But please, please look at... Please look at it in a really deep sense. We love our city. All of us do. I can tell by everybody. Stephen, he's awesome. I mean, it's really a lot of ways. I mean, Zoe, she's awesome. Erica, as cool as can be. Christine, you know, wow. Henry, I just liked the first thing he said there. And Charlie, I can only say a bunch of really cool things about him. But, you know, so thank you. I really... Wow.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young. Other commissioners, any comments?
I'll just say thank you for the presentation. Very well done. Thanks for bringing it back to us. I thought the back exercises you provided were really helpful and helped me wrap my head around it, so appreciate it.
Commissioner Keller, any last thoughts? Okay. Commissioner Simons, any last thoughts?
May I give a last thought?
Yes, Charlie. Go ahead.
I just want to thank the Commission for all of your comments and thoughtfulness and hard work. I mean, I see that at every Planning Commission meeting. So it doesn't surprise me. But we've never really focused so directly on design and what makes good design before. And I just really appreciate all of your feedback. Frankly, I've been here over 20 years, and I'm not just saying this to, you know, to sound grateful, but I am grateful. And I think a lot of what has happened throughout the years in this city is due to the Planning Commission. And you're really good input on projects. And hopefully, your input will now be felt on projects that don't even come before you for a decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. All right. Fantastic. Then, yeah, I think I will move on to the next agenda item, which is the Planning Commissioner comments. Are there any comments? Okay. Then I'd like to officially adjourn the meeting at 8:39. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.